Test, test. Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming to our, uh, our, uh, our town hall meeting and our social here. Uh, it has been a long time. We have not had a big group event with the battalion and the families and stuff in over eighteen months. So I thank everybody that came out here. And for those of you that couldn't, we understand if you could make it out, uh, you're missing out. We're hoping that you can come and join us soon for the next one that comes around. And with that hope and aspiration as we move forward with, uh, the information that you're going to receive today, we're hoping that we have more opportunities like this to get together because it's so important to make those connections with one another. So without further delay, I'm going to invite John up here. He's with Pacific Coast Church and he's hosting this event for us. And, uh, to be it that we're in his home and stuff, he's going to say a few words to everybody here. And after that, then we'll have the battalion brief. We'll get going on that. So John, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, um, welcome, by the way. So I'm just going to be brief. I just wanted to welcome you all to Pacific Coast Church. Um, it's been a difficult year, I think, for all of us, right? And so we've seen that as a church, just kind of opening back up, getting back into the routine. It's so good to see so many of you here tonight. So first off, I just wanted to thank all the people that volunteered today. There's a large group. I don't know if they can hear us, but maybe we can just clap for them real quick. And appreciate all of you coming out. So, um, like I said, I'm going to be brief. Um, we would love to be your home church or just a resource for all of you. So whatever your needs might be, we've got lots of resources for you. Uh, pacificcoastchurch.org is where you would go to kind of log on and, and find our resources or watch our sermons, messages, music that are, uh, livestreamed and also posted online. Uh, just a couple of things. So if you're, uh, a family that's got infants to fifth graders, we have Heroes Inc. So a, a great opportunity to have the kids be here, uh, for one night a week and, and have them get, uh, some instruction in the Word of God. So check that out. Uh, we have a, uh, a meeting for, for women called The Gathering that meets weekly as well. So check that out if you're interested. We also have a pre-K moms and expecting moms group called MOPS. So, um, if any of those are interesting to you, um, check it out. We also have a, a men's, uh, prayer that happens every Tuesday. And if you can't make that face to face, we also meet on Zoom over that. And then lastly, um, we have a number of community groups that meet weekly. Some of those are face to face and some of those are on Zoom. So if that's something that you'd like to get engaged with either by yourself or as a couple, um, I actually lead one of those groups myself. So love to have you. It's about three miles from here. If you'd like to do it face to face, we also have some Zoom groups, like I said. Um, if you'd just like to kind of check in, uh, review God's Word and, um, pray for each other. So that was it. I just wanted to welcome you all. Thank you very much for being here. Hope you have a, have a great, uh, evening together and, um, I'll hand this off. Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Um, one, thank you to, uh, thank you to John, Pacific Coast Church, everybody outside who hooked us up with the food, um, and the team here, uh, is pretty awesome. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, and I think I, I, you know, by now met almost everybody here. Um, my name is Jared Renniger. I'm, uh, I am Bastard Six, so I'm, I'm the battalion commander. Um, so look, here's, here's one of the reasons why we wanted to give everyone, uh, get everyone here. Um, I think it's important, one, that we all get to know each other because we're getting ready to go. You know, we, I, I've been with the battalion for six months or so. Um, and, you know, most of that has been, uh, has been, you know, COVID times and someone argued that it's still, it's still kind of raging. But, um, I, I, you know, I, I do think it's important that we're able to get together, um, and, and, and form a little bit of a family here. Um, because the things that we're getting ready to have to go do over the course of the next eighteen months to two years, um, is going to require, uh, really support from, from everybody. Um, that's the Marines supporting each other, the families supporting the Marines. Yeah, um, the, the families supporting the Marines, um, and, and the families supporting each other. Um, because we are, we are going to do, uh, quite a few things over the course, uh, of the next couple of years here. Um, and, you know, when, when I've been in battalions, uh, where it's, where it's really, really performed really well, that's, that's when everybody is, is kind of together, everybody rolling in the, in the same direction. And one piece of that is really everyone understanding what we're doing and then what we've got, uh, ahead of us so that, uh, so that we can mentally prepare for it, um, and prepare our families and prepare the team, um, to succeed. Good, Mark? Awesome. Um, and so, look, uh, like the, the Marines, and this is one thing, you know, I, I'll just be completely honest with everyone here. Like I, I have never, I have never been good at the family readiness piece, right? It's just not, it's not something that is a talent of mine. Um, and I, you know, I, I try to get, I try to get better at it, right? Um, but I, I can tell you, like, I, I have a family of my own. I got some pictures up here. You guys will see of them. Um, but, uh, but it's something that, that I know is important, right? One thing I am very good at, I can tell you, is preparing, uh, preparing a battalion to do the thing that it needs to do. Um, and so I, I want to give a shout out to, to, to Mark Spurling, um, because he really is, uh, you know, the right arm of, of the deployment readiness part in the family readiness piece, and he helped facilitate this entire thing. So if we could just give Mark a round of applause, I appreciate it. Okay, so look, I, I just want to take an opportunity with everybody here. I, I want to explain the way ahead. Um, and, and what it is that we've been doing and what we're getting ready to go do. And for those who are going to end up watching this thing online, um, we'll see if we can make this brief available to everybody um, so that you guys can get kind of the dates and get an understanding of this thing. And I'll, I'll ask Mark to see if we can get it posted somewhere or, or emailed out. Um, but we'll, we'll call this the way ahead for the Magnificent Bastards. Um, okay, so as I said, I'm not very good at, at family readiness, right? I'm not, I'm not super, um, capable in that, in that realm, trying to get better. Um, but I do have a family. I've got, uh, my wife Bethany is, is right here. If you could just raise your hand. That's Beth. Um, and we have, we have four, um, pretty cool, pretty cool kids. Um, and so, so that everybody kind of understands, right? Like I, I do consider the families and we, as a, as a whole, consider the families in everything that we do. Um, the things that we do are, are hard. They are time consuming. But trust me, when I'm making decisions to, to have us go do something, I am at that same time considering the, 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 the co-equal importance in my life, which is my family as well. So if I'm considering my family, I am also considering the Marines' families and, and everyone here. It's just the, the natural way of it. Um, and so, trust me, I, I would not put, um, our battalion or our Marines in a position that I wouldn't, that, one, I don't have to, and, and two, um, I, I know it's not going to be like, that, that the risk and the payoff for that thing isn't worth it. Right? Because I do understand that every time that, that we have Marines going to the field, every time that we have Marines, um, deploying to certain places, they're leaving their families and I'm going with them. Um, and so that is something that weighs, weighs pretty heavy on, on me and I know it weighs, weighs heavy on the team. Um, so here's, here's the command team. For those of you who don't know, uh, we've got Major Carl Quist, uh, who's our XO, who's around. Here's, there he is. Got his hand. Uh, we got Sergeant Major Soto. I think most people know, uh, Sergeant Major. Um, we've got an operations officer, uh, Major Matt Alvis, uh, who's right there. Um, we've got Chaplain Aaron Walling, Lieutenant Aaron Walling. Um, and then, uh, you know, we've already talked about, uh, about our deployment, uh, readiness coordinator and that's, uh, that's Mark Spurling. Um, just to introduce a couple of other people, um, we'll go through the companies real quick. We got Headquarters Company. We got, uh, Captain Alan Poe is the, the company commander. Um, we got First Sergeant Guerra. Echo Company, uh, Captain Vivian and First Sergeant Verdusco, who I don't think is here right now. Uh, Fox Company, we got Captain McBride, who's not here, um, and then First Sergeant Trevino. He's that angry looking fellow over there. Golf, uh, we got Captain Shan Mandrier. Um, and then, uh, First Sergeant McCrery, who is on the East Coast, uh, likely not sober right now. Um, for Weapons Company, we got, uh, we, we got Captain Carson Fletcher right there. Um, and then, uh, First Sergeant Comiato, who is likely carrying First Sergeant McCrery back to a hotel room somewhere. Um, okay, so what have we been doing? I wanted to put this up here, um, so that everybody kind of, kind of knows. You know, I try to put myself in a position of a family member, wife, husband, spouse, brother, sister, mother, father. Um, and I try to think, okay, what? If you guys aren't deploying until sometime at the end of next year, then what are you guys doing right now and why are you guys working so hard? Right? That, that to me would be kind of the number one question. Um, there's a, there's a couple of different reasons for it. All right. First reason is, one, we, we, we do what we're told, right? So we, as a battalion, have been responsible um, as the junior battalion really in the division, the ones who have returned, uh, most recently. Um, over the course of the past couple of months, there've been a couple of battalions that have come back, but for an extended period of time, we were the most junior, junior battalion in the division. Um, and due to that, um, we received most of the taskers. As the division has things that they need to have done, they would just say, hey, bastards, go do it. Um, and so that creates, regardless of whether or not we're ready to execute those things, that, that creates this, this environment where we, there's nobody else to do it. So we were really kind of the whipping post for the division for a little bit, and that, that seems like it's starting to lighten up a little bit. Um, but the other thing is, uh, we've, we've all been following what's going on in Afghanistan, right? Um, hey, so look, that, that piece of it, um, is, is important for all of us to understand. So the Marine Corps is, uh, America's nine-one-one force. We're the first to fight. We're the most ready when, you know, the nation is least ready. Take whatever bumper sticker you've got on the back of your car, apply it to this situation. Um, there are problems in the world and we have a responsibility as, as an infantry battalion and one of the Marine Corps' premier infantry battalions to, to be as ready as possible. Um, in the event that a contingency comes up and we have to go respond to that contingency. So this Afghanistan thing is a perfect example of that. Um, this thing came up and, uh, anybody here of the exercise-ready diamond thing that we just snapped everybody into recently? Um, a couple of weeks ago, um, things got pretty, things got pretty heavy for, for all of us. Um, and everybody really had to start, uh, start working and we had to get everybody ready, um, to potentially deploy in support of that contingency. I say that to say this, that's why we're training as hard as we are training. Because had we not done the things that we had done over the course of the past six months prior to that issue coming up, we would have been less prepared, uh, than we were to potentially go, go to Afghanistan. And that is something that should weigh on, on every Marine, right? It weighs kind of on the shoulders of every Marine and sailor within the battalion, knowing that every day counts, every hour counts. Um, but what we have been focusing on, uh, really over the course, uh, at least, you know, since I've been there and since, really since the battalion's been back, as always, shooting, fighting, building a team and, and conditioning our bodies for, uh, for the rigors of, of some of the things that we might be tasked with. Bottom line is, we've been preparing the battalion to fight and win in war if there is a war that comes. I'm not saying that there is one, but that's, that's what we do as an infantry battalion. That's what we get paid for and that is what our nation expects from us. So that's what we've been doing. Um, and it's, it's been, uh, that on top of these other requirements that the division has had for us, it's been, trust me, it has been very, very busy. And I know that everyone within the battalion and our extended family feels how busy that has been. And to be honest with you, um, it hasn't been this busy in, in a very long time. Um, and we've been, we've been kind of trying to figure that out, but, uh, we've been trying to make sure that the Marines are getting enough time off and trying to get them to spend time with you all. And I appreciate all the support everyone has been providing to the Marines and the battalion, um, since, at least since I've been there, but I know since they've been back. Okay, so I put this up here not, uh, so, so everybody can memorize this thing. We'll push this out to you. Um, but it is just to show you, uh, what it's going to look like really from here all the way out. Um, really, this one's through February, but through the beginning of next year. Um, big things I want to draw out here, um, are this, this mountain exercise thing up at Bridgeport. And then underneath that, live fire ranges, uh, in Twenty-Nine Palms, really the end of September through October and then all the way into the middle of November. Um, those are, those are big items. That thing underneath there that says Steel Knight, um, that's just going to be the staff that's going to go play, um, in that. So that'll be in December timeframe and we can expect that December will be kind of business as usual. We'll be training, but it won't be anything, uh, anything intense. And then we've got the seventeenth, uh, of December is going to be the Marine Corps Ball. We're going to talk about here in a little bit, um, as well as a leave block there for Christmas that we're looking at. And then I'll draw everyone's attention over to the right, towards the end of January, February timeframe. We've got this thing called, uh, the Marine Corps Combat Readiness Evaluation, right? We call it, you'll hear your Marine call it a McCree. Um, the McCree is the thing that they use to evaluate us as a battalion, right? To make sure that we are ready to do the things that we've been tasked with doing. And the reason why it's there is it's just prior to us doing this thing called Chopping to the Mew. And I will explain what that means later on here in this, in this brief, but we have a responsibility to do that. What you can expect from that is about a six-day exercise where we just kind of go out into the hinterlands of, of Camp Pendleton and, uh, and we go, we go fight, um, potentially another battalion force on force and then we get evaluated doing that. Okay, so the alligator closest to the boat, uh, this is, you'll hear the Marines call it MTX or Mountain Exercise, right? Or they'll call it a service level training exercise, whatever it is. This is what Mountain X is, okay? In, in, in kind of layman's terms, right? Without getting super stupid on it, right? Basically, we're going to take the entire battalion and we're going to bring them up into, uh, the Sierra Nevadas on the backside of Yosemite and we're going to do awesome stuff, all right? Um, twenty-six September through three November, right? So coming up on twenty-six September, the battalion's going to pick up and we're going to go out there and we're going to be at base camp at like, what? Seven thousand feet, something like that, I think base camp is. Um, and we will operate anywhere between seven thousand feet and eleven and a half thousand feet. Um, we're going to get a lot of technical skills, so a lot of the Marines are going to have a, a lot of fun learning how to, uh, tie knots, build rope bridges, um, do some things like rappelling, really cool things like that. Um, it's a, it's a place where we get together, um, and we really build our team out really well because it is a small unit leaders', um, fight up there. If you can imagine walking at ten thousand feet, um, trying to drag three or four other people with you and get them where you need to go and then still be able to fight when you get there, having used sling ropes to get you there, working on, you know, cliff assaults, trying to get there, carrying a pack with you, all at elevation. It's just this phenomenal playground of, of awesomeness up there. So, um, we'll do, uh, some cold weather training. So if you look at kind of the dates, uh, it will likely be very cold, right? So it'll be, it'll be great when we get up there and everyone's going to be super happy. Um, and then, uh, about halfway through, the weather's going to turn and it's going to start getting cold. And then everyone will pray for it to not snow and then it'll snow seven feet on us. And it's, it's going to be great. And we'll strap on snowshoes and do all this cool stuff and we'll have to move the battalion around in the snow. Um, which we've got, you know, Fox Company had an opportunity to do this, um, earlier on in the year and they had a great time and they did incredibly well. Now we're going to go up as a battalion and try to do it. And at the end of that thing, we've got a, a, another company from another battalion that's going to come up and fight us. Um, so it might not sound super cool to you all, but for us, it's like the coolest thing on the planet. Like it, it's just awesome to be able to go up there, um, and do, and do really hard stuff. But the bottom line here, right? The, what, what Bridgeport does to you, because that's where it's at, is in Bridgeport, California, right? What Bridgeport does to you is it creates unit integrity through collective misery, right? Everyone will go up there and they will be tired. They're going to be cold. They're going to be hungry, right? Everyone is going to be trying to find an excuse, probably to include me, to not be on the mountain at some point, right? And then everyone will be required to push through that thing. And that's what will make us really tied as a unit and that's the reason why we're going to do it. Um, and, and I, I, I show you this to, to, to tell you this. When we go do that, there really isn't any coming back, right? When we're on our way, when we're up there, okay? Barring any sort of crazy emergency, your Marine is gone. He is, he is on top of a mountain. He will be unable to communicate with you, all right? And you will be unable to communicate with him. So you will be able to communicate. What do we got here? Golf, we've got Captain Shan Mandrier. And then First Sergeant McCrery, who is on the East Coast, likely not sober right now. For Weapons Company, we got Captain Carson Fletcher, right there. And then First Sergeant Comiato, who is likely carrying First Sergeant McCrery back to a hotel room somewhere. Okay, so what have we been doing? I wanted to put this up here so that everybody kind of knows. You know, I try to put myself in a position of a family member, wife, husband, spouse, brother, sister, mother, father. And I try to think, okay, what... If you guys aren't deploying until sometime at the end of next year, then what are you guys doing right now and why are you guys working so hard? Right? That, to me, would be kind of the number-one question. There's a couple of different reasons for it. All right? First reason is, one, we do what we're told, right? So we, as a battalion, have been responsible as the junior battalion really in the division, the ones who have returned most recently. Over the course of the past couple of months, there've been a couple of battalions that have come back. But for an extended period of time, we were the most junior battalion in the division. And due to that, we received most of the taskers. As the division has things that they need to have done, they would just say, "Hey bastards, go do it." And so that creates, regardless of whether or not we're ready to execute those things, that creates this environment where there's nobody else to do it. So we were really kind of the whipping post for the division for a little bit. And that seems like it's starting to lighten up a little bit. But the other thing is, we've all been following what's going on in Afghanistan, right? Hey, so look, that piece of it is important for all of us to understand. So the Marine Corps is America's 911 force. We're the first to fight. We're the most ready when, you know, the nation is least ready. Take whatever bumper sticker you've got on the back of your car, apply it to this situation. There are problems in the world. And we have a responsibility, as an infantry battalion and one of the Marine Corps' premier infantry battalions, to be as ready as possible in the event that a contingency comes up and we have to go respond to that contingency. So this Afghanistan thing is a perfect example of that. This thing came up, and anybody here of the exercise-ready diamond thing that we just snapped everybody into recently? Couple of weeks ago, things got pretty heavy for all of us. And everybody really had to start working. And we had to get everybody ready to potentially deploy in support of that contingency. I say that to say this: That's why we're training as hard as we are training. Because had we not done the things that we had done over the course of the past six months prior to that issue coming up, we would have been less prepared than we were to potentially go to Afghanistan. And that is something that should weigh on every Marine, right? It weighs kind of on the shoulders of every Marine and sailor within the battalion, knowing that every day counts, every hour counts. But what we have been focusing on, really, over the course, at least, you know, since I've been there and really since the battalion's been back, as always, shooting, fighting, building a team, and conditioning our bodies for the rigors of some of the things that we might be tasked with. Bottom line is, we've been preparing the battalion to fight and win in war if there is a war that comes. I'm not saying that there is one, but that's what we do as an infantry battalion. That's what we get paid for, and that is what our nation expects from us. So that's what we've been doing. And it's been that on top of these other requirements that the division has had for us. It's been, trust me, it has been very, very busy. And I know that everyone within the battalion and our extended family feels how busy that has been. And to be honest with you, it hasn't been this busy in a very long time. And we've been kind of trying to figure that out. But we've been trying to make sure that the Marines are getting enough time off and trying to get them to spend time with you all. And I appreciate all the support everyone has been providing to the Marines and the battalion, at least since I've been there, but I know since they've been back. Okay, so I put this up here not so everybody can memorize this thing. We'll push this out to you. But it is just to show you what it's going to look like, really, from here all the way out. Really, this one's through February, but through the beginning of next year. Big things I want to draw out here are this mountain exercise thing up at Bridgeport. And then underneath that, live-fire ranges in Twenty-Nine Palms, really, the end of September through October, and then all the way into the middle of November. Those are big items. That thing underneath there that says "Steel Knight", that's just going to be the staff that's going to go play in that. So that'll be in December timeframe, and we can expect that December will be kind of business-as-usual. We'll be training, but it won't be anything intense. And then we've got the 17th of December is going to be the Marine Corps Ball we're going to talk about here in a little bit, as well as a leave block there for Christmas that we're looking at. And then I'll draw everyone's attention over to the right. Towards the end of January, February timeframe, we've got this thing called the Marine Corps Combat Readiness Evaluation, right? We call it, you'll hear your Marine call it a McCree. The McCree is the thing that they use to evaluate us as a battalion, right? To make sure that we are ready to do the things that we've been tasked with doing. And the reason why it's there is it's just prior to us doing this thing called chopping to the mew. And I will explain what that means later on here in this brief. But we have a responsibility to do that. What you can expect from that is about a six-day exercise where we just kind of go out into the hinterlands of Camp Pendleton, and we go fight potentially another battalion, force-on-force, and then we get evaluated doing that. Okay, so the alligator closest to the boat. This is, you'll hear the Marines call it MTX or Mountain Exercise, right? Or they'll call it a service-level training exercise, whatever it is. This is what Mountain X is, okay? In kind of layman's terms, right, without getting super stupid on it, right? Basically, we're going to take the entire battalion, and we're going to bring them up into the Sierra Nevadas on the backside of Yosemite, and we're going to do awesome stuff, all right? 26 September through 3 November, right? So coming up on 26 September, the battalion's going to pick up, and we're going to go out there, and we're going to be at base camp at, like, what? 7,000 feet, something like that, I think base camp is. And we will operate anywhere between 7,000 feet and 11,500 feet. We're going to get a lot of technical skills, so a lot of the Marines are going to have a lot of fun learning how to tie knots, build rope bridges, do some things like rappelling, really cool things like that. It's a place where we get together and we really build our team out really well because it is a small-unit leaders' fight up there. If you can imagine walking at 10,000 feet, trying to drag three or four other people with you and get them where you need to go, and then still be able to fight when you get there, having used sling ropes to get you there, working on, you know, cliff assaults, trying to get there, carrying a pack with you, all at elevation. It's just this phenomenal playground of awesomeness up there. So we'll do some cold-weather training. So if you look at kind of the dates, it will likely be very cold, right? So it'll be great when we get up there, and everyone's going to be super happy. And then about halfway through, the weather's going to turn, and it's going to start getting cold. And then everyone will pray for it to not snow, and then it'll snow seven feet on us. And it's going to be great. And we'll strap on snowshoes and do all this cool stuff, and we'll have to move the battalion around in the snow, which we've got, you know, Fox Company had an opportunity to do this earlier on in the year, and they had a great time, and they did incredibly well. Now we're going to go up as a battalion and try to do it. And at the end of that thing, we've got another company from another battalion that's going to come up and fight us. So it might not sound super cool to you all, but for us, it's like the coolest thing on the planet. Like, it's just awesome to be able to go up there and do really hard stuff. But the bottom line here, right, what Bridgeport does to you, because that's where it's at, is in Bridgeport, California, right? What Bridgeport does to you is it creates unit integrity through collective misery, right? Everyone will go up there, and they will be tired, they're going to be cold, they're going to be hungry, right? Everyone is going to be trying to find an excuse, probably to include me, to not be on the mountain at some point, right? And then everyone will be required to push through that thing. And that's what will make us really tied as a unit, and that's the reason why we're going to do it. And I show you this to tell you this: When we go do that, there really isn't any coming back, right? When we're up there, okay? Barring any sort of crazy emergency, your Marine is gone. He is on top of a mountain. He will be unable to communicate with you, all right? And you will be unable to communicate with him. So you will be able to communicate to the battalion through Mark, through our DRC program, right? And we'll have, you know, the OOD will have a number of different contacts you can get a hold of if there's a crazy emergency and you need to get that information to your Marine. But there won't be any Facebook posts, there won't be any Instagram, there will be none of that. And this might be the first time that many of the families in our battalion experience that with their Marine, given the day and age that we are in right now. Marines usually have their cellphones around, usually have the ability, excuse me, usually have the ability to get a hold of them. But in this particular case, that will not, that won't work, right? The other factor here is that we're going to be seven-and-a-half hours away. So for us, we have to treat this like a deployment. And so the standard rules of deployments apply, that there's not going to be any returning of the Marines unless probably, and, you know, obviously, we're going to deal with everything and, you know, specific requests on a case-by-case basis. But, Sergeant Major, what's that thing called? Local parentis? Yeah, local parentis, right? So unless there is a serious injury, hospitalization, or death of a member of the immediate family, meaning the Marine's children, wife, or parents, or, you know, brothers, sisters, that thing, it's got to be in their direct family, then that Marine isn't going anywhere. Now, obviously, we're going to entertain every single request, and we'll make a consideration, and we'll make a determination based on what that request is. But I have an obligation and a moral responsibility to really communicate that to the battalion and our families. We have to treat this like a deployment. And as a family, we also have to think about, as we continue forward and we go do some of these ship ops later on that I'll talk about, as well as the deployment, we have got to get used to that idea, that we're not going to be able to communicate, and that they're not just going to come back, all right? So I ask, what I'm asking for is everybody's help with respect to that. Because the Marines need to get this training, and it's going to be helpful for them and the unit as a whole. So we're going to need everyone's support to make sure that we keep people up on the mountain. Because, trust me, the vast majority of our time is going to be spent trying to keep people on the mountain. Like, that's just it. But it's going to be great. Okay, and then we've got Twenty-Nine Palms right after. We're going to go from the mountain, and we're going to go out to the Mojave Desert, to a complete opposite zone. Now, the question I ask myself, right? So if I'm a family member, a spouse, a brother, sister, mother, father, I'd say, "Okay, so you're going up to the mountain for 30 days, and then you're going to go to the desert. Why?" So here's kind of your answer. From the 3rd of November through the 16th of November, which is when we'll finally come back, we're going to go out there into the desert, and we're going to do what the infantry does well. One, we have some required ranges that we need to hit. There is only one place on, you know, in the Marine Corps where we can do a company-sized live-fire attack with all kinds of cool bombs and bullets and all of that stuff, and do it safely. So there's an organization out there called TTECG, and they are the ones who help train and evaluate our battalion. We have a responsibility to get that evaluation. So we're going to pick up the battalion, and we're going to go down there, and we're going to do these ranges. You'll hear your Marines talk about ranges 410 Alpha and 400, and it is like the Super Bowl for a rifle company, and it's just awesome. So again, offense, defense, awesomeness, and then we'll do Marine stuff in the desert. So bottom line, I go back to that original line: We are preparing the battalion to fight and win in war, all right? And when we come out of that, after that 30 days up in the mountain, and then an additional couple of weeks out in the desert, we're going to be good. Like, the battalion is going to be very good. And I will be able to, I'll be able to look at my hire, look up to the 1st Marine Division or 5th Marine Regiment and say, "Hey, we're ready, minus a couple of other different things. You could send us where you need to send us." And that's critically important for our battalion. And from there, a lot of those skills, from that point on, we're simply going to be sustaining. Any questions on that? All right, and we're going to come back in November. We're going to have about a month, and then we're going to do this thing that is the Marine Corps Ball. Sergeant Major, you want to talk about the Marine Corps Ball real quick?
Absolutely, sir. Good evening, everybody. First of all, what I would like to say is thank you to Pacific Coast Church and all the volunteers out there for doing this. So I was here, I think, two years ago when we did this in person before COVID, and that was my introduction to the battalion. That was my introduction to this church. That was my introduction to all the people here and all the volunteers. And I thought it was the best thing ever. Coming from Camp Lejeune, if you've been stationed over there, this doesn't exist over there, right? You show up, there's a family meeting, it's at the base theater, and they're like, "Get out." You don't get fed, nobody smiles at you, everybody's upset, and they just want you to go away because everybody just wants to go home. I was really happy to come here and get that introduction, what this is. And then the fantastic job that they were able to do and put all these things together for us, you know... To be honest with you, they'll just do it whenever we ask. Like, they were like, "Hey, we will do it, we'll make it happen, just let us know." That's very inviting. I was very grateful for them then, and I'm still grateful now. A year ago, one year after that, you know, with COVID and everything, before we deployed to go to Okinawa, they still came through. We weren't able to have any people inside here, but I still remember that time, the commander and his staff and Mark and everybody else that came to help us put this thing together. We will stay able to project our message, you know, through Facebook and other websites and media. So even under those conditions, they were still willing and able to do that for us. So I can't thank them enough. They're just fantastic, everything they do over here. So thank you very much for that. To all the families that are all here, friends, children, wives, husbands, aunts, uncles, moms, dads, thank you, and I really mean that, you know? Being the battalion sergeant major, you know, it comes sometimes with a little bit of a price. And obviously, being the battalion commander, same thing. You know, we here do take care of a lot of the things. And I think to Bastard Six's point, right? When we look at everything, we think about the private and his wife, his young wife and baby. Is this good for them? When we were thinking about the ball, that's immediately what we thought about. What is going to be good for them? Because there's a cost associated always to the ball, right? Everybody wants to go, but by the time you get your blues fixed all over again, because we destroyed them, we destroyed them every year at the ball. That's just the way it happens, right? You put one, two down, medals are getting flown away, people are taking pictures, right? Everybody's having a good time, you know? And then a Marine's wife's like, "Hey, I got to go get my nails did and my hair, and I got to go do this, and we need childcare, and we need transportation, and we need a hotel." Hundreds and hundreds of dollars now have piled up. For a lot of young Marines, that's a lot. And some of them are just like, "Hey, I just can't do that." So this year, we took a different approach to it. We started with a fundraiser, and that's when we started thinking, "How do we, you know, get money to help Marines and sailors and the battalion to go to the ball?" Being an infantry battalion is probably the hardest thing to do, right? Everybody's like, "Hey, let's go do a car wash." "Yeah, well, that's not going to happen because we got to go to the field next week." "Okay, when we come back from the field, let's go sell some baked cookies." I'm like, "Who's baking the cookies?" They're like, "Nobody." "Yeah, because you're going to the range." So it gets very difficult. So the best thing we could do is come up with swag. So the whole time I'd been here before, the battalion just didn't have any swag. So the COs said, "Hey, I want T-shirts and coins and hats and koozies and stickers and you name it." We're like, "All right, we're going to do it, sir, let's fire this thing up." It took a couple of months. Finally, we got the design. I'm wearing one of the T-shirts right now. So be like me, or be weak, says the CO all the time. First Sergeant Trevino's wearing one. But we do, we have tons of stuff out there that we're selling to all the Marines. The reason I'm saying this is because every time you buy something, especially family members, anything that's on the positive side of that cost is going straight to the ball. Which brings me to the ball, which I'm super excited about. Because last year, our ball was going to be in Vegas, and because of COVID, it was shut down. That's probably the worst news I could deliver to the battalion when they got shut down. On top of that, every single 10, or November 10th, has been in the field. We were at ITX for the Marine Corps birthday. We were at Okinawa for the Marine Corps birthday. And again, we will be at Twenty-Nine Palms for the Marine Corps birthday. So we've never been back here. Our ball has either been in December, or it was supposed to be in December. No big deal, because this year, the best part about it is we're going to have the ball and then go straight into our block of leaves. It's like this huge celebration, then vacation right after that. So I'm pretty excited about that. We haven't had a ball in a while, so we put a lot of thought and effort into this. We also used our friends at Leatherneck Planets to put this thing together. But this year, the ball's going to be at Caesar's Palace. Now, I had the privilege of going over there with some of the first sergeants to go look at the venue and test out the hotel rooms and the food, which was awesome. And I'll tell you right now, I'm just going to talk about money really quick, and I'll tell you about everything that's inside of there. The tickets, as you can see up here, are going to be $85 per person. I'm going to tell you right now that the other battalions are having their ball there, they're $120 per person. So we were able to bring the cost down, you know, drastically. Like, I mean, from 100 and something to $85 is huge. We made a commitment right up front. We are going to sell all this stuff, and we're going to save money. We're going to put it all in so that Marines and sailors can bring their families and pay $85 per ticket. The other awesome thing is the room rate. $80 at Caesar's Palace, which is insane. Some of those guys staying in the rooms are like, "Sergeant Major, these rooms are..." They're like, "They're just out of control." Like, they're all excited, right? They're like, "How much is it going to cost?" Like, $80. Like, that's it? $80. Locked in at $80 for the day you get there and the next, I think it's a total of three days, two, three days, three days total, at $80 a day. Usually that weekend, because the Raiders are playing, the Browns, the tickets, or sorry, the room rate ranged anywhere from $100 to $1,300 per room per night. I know I'm staying there. This year, I'm bringing my entire fam, I'm bringing my mom, my dad, my sister, my niece, right? My wife, my three-year-old. I think I'm bringing my, I mean, I had to have a whole table for this this year. One, obviously, the cost had something to do with it. I'm like, "Hey, I got it, it's on me this year," not knowing that we got the cheapest rate this year. But $80 per room locked in, and then the childcare. Here's another thing: Mark worked really hard to get this thing going. $30 for the childcare. That, I was just like, "Are we going to be able to do this? And how is this possible?" He's like, "Don't worry, we're going to be able to do this." So I believe in Mark. I believe that when he says that we can do it at that rate, that it's going to happen. So the $30 is nothing. I think I'm bringing my nephews just so they can stay there for the $30 for childcare so I can give my sister-in-law and my brother-in-law a break. But I don't think anybody else is doing that. It's usually like anywhere between $70 and $100, give or take, for childcare. So at $30, that thing's pretty cheap. We have our guest of honor. He's a former bastard. I won't really talk about him, only because I want to save, I've seen some of his videos. This guy's motivating. The CO knows him. He called him up. He asked him if he could be there. He said, "Yep, I will be there." I think we're in for a treat. Not only him, but everybody that's going to be involved in this. Our ball is going to have approximately 1,500 people this year. That's probably the most I've ever, any ball that I've ever been to. I've never been anything over 1,100 or 1,200, but the max capacity is 1,500. I think we're going to hit 1,500 guests to the ball. We have the 2-4 Association coming this year, so it'll be even more like over-the-top because they couldn't have their reunion in Florida. And they asked us, "Hey, is it all right if we come over to your guys' ball and make this thing just even bigger?" We're like, "Yeah, like, let's fire it up." So they're going to be there. We put in a request for the band, so we hope that this year they come through because lately, it's been kind of hard to get it. But we're in the works right now of getting the band over there. The other thing is the timeline. So I'll talk about the timeline really quick. So the cocktail reception starts at 17:30. Our ceremony starts at 19:00. And then the dinner and the dancing portion at 20:00. And then after that, it's just TBD. We ask when we can shut down because there's some Marines that just don't want to leave. And they're like, "We'll estimate somewhere, like, I think it was 000 or 01, I think, somewhere around there." But they're just like, "Whenever the last person leaves, that's when we'll stop." It's Vegas. And I was like, "Yeah, good point." You know, good on them for thinking about us. The parking there, self-parking is complimentary if you're staying there. If you're going to use the valet, it's $36 for the overnight stay. There is a photo booth on station there. They're going to do, you're going to get your photos there within 30 minutes. So you get there, you take your photos, and you get them in 30 minutes instead of getting them sent to your house instead of to unit so that you can pick them up later. I think that's a disaster, so I thought this was awesome, that you can take your photos, walk around, shake some hands, see some people, hug some friends, and then go get your photos and put them over at your table. We already talked about the tickets. Okay, back to the ball thing. So the food. The food is amazing. We had, so I'm not a vegetarian, let me just, I'm going to put that out, right? So you don't think something different about me. I love meat. But when they brought out the vegetarian plates, the plate and the meat plates, I was like, "Okay, the meat's pretty good." It was a combination of like chicken and beef, right? But then you had a vegetarian plate. I looked over at my wife, I'm like, "Yeah, I'm not going to eat that because that's not what I do. I'm a Marine, I eat meat, right?" But they're like, "Just try it." And as soon as they tried it, done. I'm like, "Write me down for vegetarian, that's what I'm going to have when I go there." The food was outstanding, their salad was amazing. The cake, we are going to have a ceremonial cake. But for our dessert, it's a lemon cheesecake, I think is what it is. I picked that, so sorry if you don't like it. I just overwrote everybody because people wanted chocolate. I love cheesecake. I'm like, "We're doing cheesecake. I think people will love it." Okay, I think that's pretty much for the ball, unless somebody has questions about the ball. But anything that you can do when you buy something, I'm telling you, you're helping us out. I've tasked the first sergeants to run out and figure out ways to sell. I mean, I have it in the back of my car right now. Like, I could literally open up the hatch and pull out T-shirts and everything, put a little booth, and let's go. We got a Venmo thing, like, we're ready for this. So if you're interested in ever buying stuff, please let your Marine know, your sailor. Tell them, "Hey, I want stuff." And the reason I'm saying this, Christmas is coming around the corner, so I already know what my relatives are going to get for Christmas this year. They're going to get a whole bunch of hoodies and T-shirts from 2-4, right? And hats and all that. So I already told them, like, "Hey, your gift's already bought. It's already packaged and ready to go." So I encourage you to please help out by buying because through buying, you're donating towards the cause. The cause here is, how do we help the private and his wife and his children get to the ball? Because that's the bottom line, right? How do we get them to the ball? Because at the end of the day, it's that memory that they're going to have forever, and we want this to be the best ball ever. I want it to be my best ball, I'm going to be honest with you because I think this is my last ball here with the unit. So I'm pretty stoked, and I'm going to make every effort to make it enjoyable for all of you, your friends and your families. And unless I have any other questions, I'm going to pass it over back to the CO.
Oh, here we go. Now it's working. Question from Taylor, she got it on the spouses' page. The question was for family members that want to support and help the unit with buying merchandise. How are they going to go about doing that? Especially if they're not here around Camp Pendleton.
Okay, so if they're not in there, right? That's a good question because we never had that happen before. We were all selling it local. I'll tell you what. So if your Marine is here, I think that's the answer, right? Do it through your Marine and sailor. You can, the money thing is easy. We've gone, like I say, we use Venmo now instead of cash, or we do cash also, but like, I don't think I'm a dinosaur, but I think I am at the same time because I was like, "What's this Venmo thing?" Right? So it had to be explained to me, you know, you can just transfer money, and we have a QR code. So I think that's the answer. There's a QR code that can be used. They can scan it, pay for it, and have their Marine or sailor send it to them. Now, if it's somebody that doesn't have a Marine or Sailor in the unit, please contact Mark. I think what we can do, and we will make every effort, to mail it to you. Because I think that's the right answer, right? If you want to use our swag, you want to represent the unit, then I think you have an obligation to send it to you, and I will. I'll put that out now. I'll probably kick myself later on for having 10 boxes going to the post office, but I'll do that if that's what's needed. Does that answer their question?
I believe so, but the question came up as far as, once the Marines buy the merchandise or if they purchase it, mailing it home, that's going to be the Marines and the family's responsibility to do that.
If the Marine buys it, yes.
So, because the unit doesn't have the funds to forward the merchandise.
Yeah, that's true. Like, we don't have, we don't have like a... Like, we don't have like a... I can't use postal office to send things other than official mail and official items. And really, that's only the battalion commander. I'm not authorized to do that, nobody else in the unit, unless it's official mail. So yeah, it would have to come out the Marines' dime or Sailor's dime. Again, if somebody's watching and they were a former Two Four Marine or Sailor, hit up Mark, I'll mail it to you. I'll make sure that you get it. Don't worry about the shipping. I'll handle that.
And the other question was, is to purchase the items, they go to... Right now, it's First Orange Gera?
Yes. So right now, it's First Orange Gera from Headquarters and Service Company. He's our... First Orange McCurry's at school, like the CO said. He's at some bar right now, hanging out, having a good time at school. But First Orange Gera is our rep right now, representing all our merchandise and anything Marine Corps ball-associated. Before I click off, I forgot to say this. So to purchase the tickets, because everybody's like, "You're talking too much," but I don't know where to buy it. If you wanna purchase tickets, you go to LeatherneckPlanningEvents.com. The password is BRAVE. It'll take you to the Two Four website. And then it's super easy, it's very interactive. You find your table, click on the seat and table that you want, find out what unit your Marine or Sailor is at, and that's where you purchase your ticket. So it's LeatherneckPlanningEvents.com and the password is BRAVE. Any other questions?
There was a question about the ball.
This is awesome. Nobody ever asks me questions. The battalion star major has nothing good to say.
This is one of the spouses asking, "Is there a possibility or chance that the ball would be canceled again?"
Don't put that on me, Ricky Bobby. Well, I will say this. I do not control Las Vegas. I don't control Caesar's Palace. And I don't control the weather. Right now, we are still being told it's a go. I have a lot of trust in Vegas, and I'm rolling the dice on this. They have to. They don't have a choice. I will go down there and complain. But right now, we have been told not to worry about this, that it's still go. We're still green-lighted. We're still selling tickets. Everything's a go. If it changes, I will make sure that the word gets out immediately, right? Because we'll have to start a refund, obviously, for everybody that bought tickets already. Can't do nothing about the hair appointment or the nails, sorry. But everybody will get their money back. But as of right now, everything's still go.
Oh, it's going.
I had a question about the hotel room block. Is that something through Caesar's Palace? And is there a code or anything you need to use?
I'm glad you asked that, sir. Great question.
Great question, sir. So once you go onto LeatherneckPlanningEvents.com, you're gonna have the choice of there of buying the ticket, getting your room, and the child service all in at the same time. Caesar's Palace is already tracking this. They understand. We asked... I asked this question a million times that day. The first one, I'm like, "Are you sure that that's all we have to do?" And they're like, "Yes." I'm like, "Are you positive?" Because this is all weird to me. Eighty dollars a night is just crazy. And they're like, "Nope. You just go on your website, you'll lock it in through there. If you have any issues, the only thing you have to do is let them know that you are going to the 2nd Battalion 4th Marines ball and your price is locked in." You can do all this through the website. So this year, this is what's awesome about Leatherneck Planning Events is that they have put everything into one site and you can one-stop shop, buy everything right there. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, it's gonna be rad. Right. Any other questions on the ball? Real quick before I move on. We're gonna have some question-and-answer period after this as well. But, okay. I got this slide up here just to let you know. Eighteen December, that's the day after the ball, leave starts, and the Marines aren't coming back until 3 January. Plan on it? That's it. That's our leave block. And I'm... You know, I'll probably eat in a portion of these words later. But look, the Marines are gonna get leave, period, right? Barring some sort of weird natural disaster, right? Or my boss ordering me to make every Marine go into that terrible word, ROM, right? Something crazy like that. We're all going on leave, and that's it. And I think it's... I think that, you know, this one's pretty near and dear to me because I love Christmas. It's like my favorite thing ever. But, look, we have got a really long workup, and we've been working really hard. And the Marines have been working hard since November until now. By the time that this Christmas leave block comes up, we will still have almost eleven months before we deploy again. There is no reason why we shouldn't be able to just take this leave block. So I'm committed to ensuring that it's there. So I'm telling everyone, plan on it. Plan on taking this leave block. Eighteen December through three January, all right? And then you can hold me accountable to that. Okay. So when we come back from that Christmas leave block, we're gonna be in full-on prep mode for this thing called the MUE. And I know most everybody in here knows what a MUE is. But I'm gonna describe this for anybody who's listening or anybody who's in the room who doesn't know. That thing that the battalion just did was the thirty-first MUE, and it doesn't count, right? It just... In terms of, like, put that thing in your head, right? And be like, "Oh, that's a MUE." It's not. Move that over here. What we're gonna go do is the thirteenth MUE. And this thing is gonna be pretty awesome, okay? So I described us building our battalion up and learning how to do all this offense, defense, patrolling, stability ops, all this good stuff. We are all doing that for this entire period so that we can prepare to come do this, all right? So a MUE, you can see there at the top, right? MUES involve ships. And those ships are gonna be sitting down in San Diego, okay? What they're gonna do is they're gonna take our battalion. We'll go from being an infantry battalion, and they'll call us a battalion landing team. So we'll go from being 2nd Battalion 4th Marines to being Battalion Landing Team Two Four. What that means is they're gonna add a whole bunch of other Marines to our battalion, right? They're gonna add some LAR guys. You might not know who they are, but there'll be an LAR company that'll come. There will be an artillery battery that gets attached to us. There'll be some other, you know, cats and dogs, vehicles, equipment, people, all of that good stuff. They'll make us this battalion landing team. We will be that... Those folks right there in the center, the ground combat element, right? What they're also gonna do is they're gonna take this air combat element, which is a whole bunch of jets and helicopters and cool stuff, all those guys that hang out over there in the wing. They're gonna take a chunk of those guys and they're gonna put them right on our left. And then they're gonna take a whole bunch of logistics folks, and they're gonna call them the logistics combat element. And they're gonna be people who like make water, move things, like those people. They're gonna take them and a whole bunch of equipment, and they're gonna put them right next to us. Then they're gonna take a colonel, and they're gonna put them over the top of us. And then they're gonna call that thing the thirteenth MUE, right? So as I've said, we will have at that point learned how to behave as an infantry battalion. Now the fun starts. Now we have to learn how to behave as a MUE. So the battalion at that point will probably be about thirteen-hundred to fourteen-hundred strong, all right? And now we start training with our logistics combat element and our air combat element, all headquartered by a Colonel Command, all right? So this thing gets bigger and a lot more complicated. Now, I put this slide up here and I hesitated to do it, but like, I have to be completely transparent with you. This is what a MUE workup looks like, right? Once we chop in April, this is what it looks like. Because as you can imagine, how complicated this thing actually is. Imagine taking just our fourteen or our thirteen-hundred, right? And then adding joint strike fighters and MB-22s and a whole bunch of pilots, and then a whole bunch of people with like hoses and trucks and things, and then shoving them all onto three ships and having us try to learn how to operate together. And our mission will be to conduct operations from the sea. For context, the MUE is the strategic reserve of the United States. So if things happen in the world, they send the MUES. So the folks who are in Afghanistan currently are from a MUE. The eleventh Marine... Or excuse me, the eleventh MUE, which has 1-1, BLT-1-1 on it, just took off. They are en route to that zone, to that area over there, to take the place of the MUE that got committed. So the mission that we have is remarkably critical, but we can't just take off and say that we're trained. And that's why in that six-to-eight-month period, after we chop in April, it's really hot and heavy from there. And that's why I'm communicating it to everyone here so that no one is surprised. The first time that I went on a MUE, it was at the beginning of a MUE workup. I showed up to this battalion. I was a second lieutenant in 2nd Battalion 4th Marines. And by the time we were on our way out of there, Beth was just telling me to leave. It's the way it was. And so I'm communicating that so that everyone is mentally prepared for what this thing looks like. I draw your attention to the first, second, and third periods there. Those are ship ops of two weeks or more through the summer. There's three of them, right? They're separated by anywhere between... From anywhere from one week to three weeks. But what it will look like is your Marine will go on ship for a couple of weeks, and then he'll come back for a couple of weeks. Then he'll go on ship for a couple of weeks, and he'll come back for a couple of weeks. And then he's gonna go on this third ship op, which is almost three weeks long. And that is where we get certified as a MUE. There's a bunch of people who come in and they evaluate us and they say, "All right, like, can these guys pick up, you know, a hundred and sixty folks via helicopters, land them somewhere in Camp Pendleton, do what they need to do, and then pick them back up and get them back out of there?" That is one mission set that we'll have to execute. And I think there's a total of thirteen. All right? So that's what we'll be training to make happen. We'll come back from that third sea period. We will be trained, and we will be certified at that point. And then there will be a pre-deployment leave block there, and then we will be waiting to deploy. Reason why I've got this thirteenth MUE tentative deployment window in there is because that thing has a tendency to shift around. It will come into better granularity as we get closer. But again, it is still over a year away. So we will have this multiple times, or at least a couple more times, before we pump out of here. So I'll be able to update everyone and get everyone a better idea of when that deployment is gonna be. It was October. It looks like it's shifting potentially to November. And MUE deployment dates get weird because it's entirely based on the ship's maintenance. When that ship is ready to go and we are certified, then we'll go, right? But sometimes, you know, we can't control what happens with the Navy and what happens to the maintenance for them. And that will likely be the thing, the determinant factor that makes that date move. Okay. I tell you that, and I know it's all super sad. So here's a chaplain. Here you go. Hey, chaps.
Good evening. I'm Aaron Walling. I'm the chaplain. I'll just take a few moments. But chaplains have one of the coolest jobs, one of the coolest jobs across the military. I'm a Navy chaplain. We serve the Navy, Marines, and Coast Guard. But we simply get to support the warfighters. We're not warfighters, but I work with warfighters. I'm not the cool person, but I work with a lot of cool men and women. And it's our job to simply come alongside and offer support. And it's not just the warfighter, but it's the warfighter and their families. And so their dependents, their spouses, their kids. We are here to provide support to the warfighter and the family. And we do that in a couple of different ways. One of that, as you can imagine, would be kind of that religious side of things. Looking at the care of faith and the free exercise of religion. For those who share the same faith as the chaplain, we're able to provide religious services. For those who have a faith that's different than the chaplain, we ensure that you have the opportunity to express and experience that faith. We facilitate that. And if you choose no religious preference, we also ensure that you have the right to do so. We are looking for the care of the entire battalion for all families, regardless of their faith perspective. But that doesn't mean that you have to be going through something that is dealing with faith to receive the care and the support of the chaplain. A lot of the time that we spend is simply in that care and that counsel. It's a tough line of work. I don't have to tell you that. We just saw slides that reminded us of the kind of life to which we all have committed ourselves. And I say "we all" because you know, it's not just the uniform member who has made this commitment, who makes this sacrifice. It's all of us. And we're here to provide that care, that counsel, to help you get connected to resources that maybe you know they exist. Maybe you don't yet know that they exist. But that's our opportunity, that's our privilege, to provide support, be it through faith, be it through care. But it's through walking alongside with you. And so these are the numbers. In fact, I would encourage you, that office number, the seven-six-zero, I would just go straight to the cell number, the two-eight-one. If you will put that in your phone, use that number. You can call, text. It doesn't have to be working hours. It can be the evenings, it can be the weekends. If you have a need, if you have a question, if there's a concern, feel free to reach out. Now, one of the coolest things about being a chaplain with Two Four is that by the very nature of who we are, I get to be called Bastard Chaps. I don't know if I could even say that in church, but I am Bastard Chap. So you can use that phone number. And if you are in need, you can reach out to Bastard Chaps. You can reach out to Chaps. You can reach out to Aaron, whatever's most comfortable. But feel free to use that number, standing by to support in any way. And thank you for the service and the sacrifice that you all are making to do what we do.
All right. We were also gonna have our acting Marine Family Life Counselor here. Her name is Beth, but she was unable to make it. This is her cellphone here. What they do is provide counseling to families, right? Similar, you know, there's a little bit of a bleed over here with what the chaplain does. But they provide counseling for families. And they also provide a lot of services for like new parents, right? There's a whole bunch of different workshops that you can go to. And so they are trained and educated family counselors. And so currently, who is serving our battalion is a woman named Beth, and she's really great. Her number is there. I wish she could have been here today to speak for herself. But if you are looking to just, you know, strengthen your relationship or you're looking for some resources associated with how you can kind of deal with the military lifestyle, deal with new children, deal with getting multiple children, right? Like that whole thing, which gets really interesting. Go ahead and give her a call because I think it's really useful. Mark, you wanna talk about some of this? Well, we got some contact information here.
Thank you, sir. This here is some of the stuff that I put together here as a quick kind of overview. This presentation will be given out later to everybody, so you don't have to copy or memorize or take pictures of it. We'll get it out to everybody, and it'll be available. But there are some good phone numbers on here to keep track of. Most noted, what the colonel was talking about here just a little while ago was the MFLAC, the Bottom Line of Information there. You can see that there's several phone numbers down there with their extensions. Those are all the MFLACs that are in the San Mateo area. So if you can't get ahold of one, there's three other ones that service the area up there that you're free and able to contact. They all do the same thing. Some of them are trained and licensed for specific items, but they're all MFLACs one and the same. So please get that information out to everybody. Now, the other item that we got coming on up here is important resources that we have available. I could go ahead and drone on and give hours upon hours and so could MCCS instructors about all the things that are available to our families. But these ones here are kind of the top ones. If you look at them, the American Red Cross, as we know for emergency communications, that information that's posted there is the lifeline for families to get ahold of their Marine or Sailor when they are out of the area. And this is the only vetted and approved notification system through the armed services to get to active duty members who are forward deployed. Okay? You can still contact me, you can contact the CDO, the duty officer, but this is the approved method through the American Red Cross to ensure that it turns on some of these other items, especially for the money and the approval for emergency leave purposes. So it's important to always keep that on your, kind of, information handy. And you have not only the phone number, but you also have the Hero Care app along with the website. So you don't even have to pick up a phone, you can do this electronically as well. And then, of course, the other items that are listed there, and most noted, the Military One Source. Just like the name implies, it is your one-stop shop for all informational items that are concerning what we call this military lifestyle. They cover everything from what the purpose of PCS is, how to do your moves, they even give you a calendar, it's like a count-back calendar, so that when a Marine and his family receive orders, they can actually go in there, and there's a program calendar in there that kind of gives you a sequence of events and timelines to follow, to help streamline and make your moves easier. They also have available counselors that can be called up, and they will take and provide the same type of care that chaps or our MFLAC do, but they can do this nationwide, and all their providers are usually certified across the country in order to provide some type of counseling services that are allowed over telephonic or face-to-face using a Zoom call or other appropriate applications. And then, of course, then we have our Marine, Navy and Marine Corps Relief Society, which is a way for families that are being challenged or stressed financially, emotionally, or just need the support. The Navy and Marine Corps Relief Society is a great avenue for that. And they also have a program called the Visiting Nurses Program, which I highly encourage, especially brand-new moms, to go ahead and tap into that resource, so that you can have a nurse practitioner come to your home and actually help out and assist, and give you some valuable information as far as relating to childcare, and also self-care. Because it isn't easy becoming a new mom, and there are a lot of stresses that go along with that. I'm never ever gonna experience those, but I'm sure a lot of our moms out here can, and it's one of those vital things that need to be checked on and assisted with. And then, one of the things that the Colonel brought up here, that I ask all of our families, this is not just our married Marines, this is also our single Marines and their families that help and support them. The item was brought up about the training and the preparation, and some of the things that we did with this Operation Ready Diamond that we just went through a couple of weeks ago. What those apply to, and what I like to kind of associate that with, is a stress test. You and your families need to do a stress test before they head up to the mountains. And that stress test can be anything that you can put to your imagination, as far as... One of the things I put to the experience here is, a new family here, say you have a newborn, and you're given the keys over basically, or the responsibility of being a single parent now. Have you done that in the past? Can you relate to taking care of a child on your own? And do you have not only the means and the capability of doing it, but are you ready to do this if an emergency comes up? Meaning, do you have the information for your doctors? Do you have somebody that can step in in the case that you, the single parent, becomes ill or incapacitated? Until an emergency message can be sent out, bring that Marine maybe back down from the mountain, because it's not gonna happen within hours of you making a phone call. That Marine may not even be able to get into bandwidth or notified, maybe for a half-day or so. Then it's gonna take another day for them to possibly get transportation and make the travel. So it doesn't happen overnight. These things take time, and that's why family care plans are so important. So I stress to everybody that is here or sees this video, put your family through these little stress tests to ensure that you are prepared for when your Marines and sailors depart, and they're not gonna be within communication range. Okay? I know I don't have any questions, we haven't had any questions whatsoever during this whole brief. We're doing a good job, sir. The one thing I do ask for of you, sir, is, all those neat photos that we got up there with your family and all the operations and stuff, I hope that we can task the companies to start getting photos like that, farm them into me after they've been properly reviewed so I can get them out to our families to share. Families are always asking me, why don't I ever see my Marine? Okay? Out there doing all this fun stuff. For some reason, everybody's camera shy, or I understand operational commitments don't allow for it, but somebody's gotta have a camera out there following you around to make sure that there's historical value, and just to make sure that we live the moments of our life, to capture them, and if allowed, we can share them with our audience, which are our supporters and our benefactors. So, I pitched that out to you. And, one last thing before I step off the stage here. Gabby and the crew out there prepared a lot of food, we owe them a big thanks, they made way too much for the audience that showed up here. So, everybody here needs to do their part by grabbing leftovers. So, if you hire a company leader, I ask you to grab stuff, take it back to your Marines. And those of you that are going home, make sure you feed your kids later on tonight for a midnight snack. Get rid of it, okay? I highly encourage you to do that. And if there's anything that I can be of any help or assistance, please, everybody has my information, contact me and let me know, okay? So that moves us on to the last stage, and I'm gonna exit, unless anybody else has got any questions here.
Hey, so, you see what we did there, right? The whole plan was to just like show you what was getting ready to come, so that everybody could be like, oh man, it's gonna be hard. And then, we gave you all the resources to try to make it a little bit less hard, after chaplain motivated all of us. But like, look, the intent is really not for everyone to look at that and see dread for what's coming up. Right? It is important that we're transparent with everybody, and everybody knows. Right? Like, one of the things that we usually struggle with is a lack of communication in the Marine Corps. And I think that, I think that families and the battalion can prepare better if they know what's coming, regardless of how hard it is. There's a seahorse here. What are we doing?
Not for you, it's not a surprise, no, Bethany's not expecting. The seahorse here, that Colonel's holding in his hand, is something that the spouses get together on a monthly basis and put together for all the newborns within the battalion of 2-4. They've been doing this the whole ten years that I've been here, they haven't dropped this project. So if you are expecting, have a newborn that's been born while you've been here with 2-4, we hand these out regularly. And if you'd like to pitch in and help, we encourage you to come out and lend your help and support for it. You don't have to know how to sew, most of the ladies don't, but they're great at using a pair of chopsticks and stuffing them as the other ladies that can sew, do them and prepare them. So every little bit helps, and it's also a great way for the ladies to get together and connect and talk. They do more socialize and get more things done in three hours while they're working with their hands than I think a lot of times the Marines do in the course of a week. Alright? They are multitaskers on a grand scale that we can all appreciate. So I encourage you, if you wanna be part of the sewing group, please come out and let me know, and I'll get you in contact with the ladies so that you can help and participate in that project.
And we're gonna be giving out a lot of those seahorses about ten months after we return from Mount Necks. So anyway, yeah, like, looking at this, right? This is what infantry battalions do. Right? This is what infantry battalions do, and I think that if we are able to look forward and understand what's coming, and mentally prepare for it, prepare ourselves, prepare our families, prepare each other, then it's gonna be awesome. Like, it's just gonna be awesome. I've been through things like this before, and a lot of the Marines out here and a lot of the families have been through things like this before. And the thing that I know is that by the time all of it is over, we will have had one of the most formative and greatest experiences of our lives. And that takes all of us to come together to make that happen and support each other. So that's one of the reasons why we're all here. So I really thank, I thank everyone who's listening, everyone who's watching, and everyone who showed up today to join us, because I really do, I a hundred percent believe that it's gonna take all of us to do this well. To do this well and come out the other side of it well. So, thanks for coming. If there are questions, love to take them, anyone here can answer them. We got Sergeant Major, we got Mark here, we got the company commanders. Anything that's been on anybody's mind, doesn't have to pertain necessarily to this brief, I'm willing to answer any question, or at least attempt to. Going once? Yeah. That'll work. Mark, we got anything online? Good. Alright. Hey, we're good? Alright. Hey, look, it was great meeting everybody who's here. I'm just gonna hang out for a little bit, Sergeant Major will hang out, and most of the leadership will hang out here. If you guys have got questions, things you don't wanna ask in front of everybody else, come on up and talk. I'm willing to talk about really anything. Alright? Thank you for coming, really appreciate it.